It is the News Blitz with Randy Wang on Talk Radio 790 KABC. We're here every single day from five to six talking about the local issues that matter to you most and taking your phone calls at 800-222-5222, 1-800-222-5222, your emails as well at randykabc@gmail.com and search for the KABC News Blitz wherever you get your podcasts. As you are most likely well aware, most major cities in the state of California are facing a huge budget shortfall. Whether it's the city of Los Angeles with almost a billion dollars, San Francisco with almost a billion dollars, Oakland with $250 million, San Jose with around $200 million, the city of San Diego with $250 million. Interestingly enough, we don't hear about any of the cities in Orange County that are broke. But these are some of the largest cities in the state and they're all having some huge budget problems. And there's a lot of reasons why we're here. We've gone through Los Angeles' problems with negotiating pay raises for every single department because it was only fair since they knew they had to give raises to police and fire. That may have bankrupted the city. The nonstop liability payouts, because God forbid, why even have a city attorney's office if we're not going to fight any of these lawsuits? Most of them, you know, you have to settle because the city was in the wrong, but occasionally there's something frivolous and the city says sure. Or we passed legislation making it even easier to sue the city and the county, and that's an issue. You have a whole bunch of problems. How did we get here? But more importantly, how are we fixing it? How are we going to solve these budget shortfalls? And one of the things that has come up quite a bit, thanks to one of our listeners ambushing Karen Bass and asking her if she's going to take a pay cut, to which she said, "The two most favorite words that I have in the English language," and they happen to be the same word.
Absolutely, absolutely.
In fact, do I have that sound? It was from the other day. Let's see if I could find it. When Karen Bass was asked if she is taking a pay cut, eh, I have to look for it. It's, you know, it's in the April folder and then I have to go through all the days because I think it was on Tuesday. Nope, wasn't on Tuesday. Maybe it was on Monday. Let's check it right here. Here it is. I found it. I labeled it Bass Absolutely.
Can I get a picture?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Are you going to be taking a pay cut to help the budget?
Absolutely.
You are?
Well, we don't know. We'll have to see. Thank you.
So that has been widely reported and people have seen that video. And though, although we're about two weeks later, there's been no details of a pay cut, no details of how much her pay is getting cut. For reference, Karen Bass makes about $300,000 a year. Members of the LA City Council start at $220,000 a year, and that doesn't count with all the other benefits that they get. But you have highly paid city officials, not just in LA, but all over. And what do you know, the question is being asked to them, even in other cities in the state, hey, you're facing shortfalls, you're talking about cutting essential services and laying off people. Is anybody at the top going to start taking pay cuts? Whether it's significant to the budget or not, you could argue even if it's symbolic, it sends the right message because a lot of people in local elected office are making way more money than the average constituent. And there seems to have been imbalance there for me. Well, in the city of San Diego, local electeds were asked, hey, would you be willing to take a pay cut? And they had a fascinating answer. We can't take a pay cut even if we wanted to. And in fact, the mayor and members of the city council in San Diego, a city that's facing a $250 million budget shortfall, are actually set to get raises this summer. How did that happen? Oh, I'm glad you asked. It's a fascinating story and a long lesson in why you've got to pay as much attention as you can if you're going to vote yes on a ballot measure. If you vote no on something, you don't need to read that much into it. But if you're going to vote yes on something, make sure you get all the fine details because sometimes we get sold a package of goods that turns out to be rotten. For more, here is some excellent reporting from NBC 7 in San Diego.
You've probably heard by now, the city of San Diego facing a budget deficit of about a quarter of a billion dollars, but it's not the only city with issues.
And of course, San Diego's solutions are jacking up parking, jacking up trash fees, and getting rid of beach bathrooms, which is a terrible idea. Banning the bonfire pits, that's a terrible idea.
Los Angeles is tackling a budget shortfall of nearly $1 billion.
And this past weekend, LA Mayor Karen Bass announced she will take a pay cut and hold off unscheduled raises for her staff.
Okay, first off, she didn't announce she would get to take a pay cut. She was asked if she would, and she said yes, and then she never followed it up. And here we are two weeks later and no announcement of a pay cut. What is her staff getting? You know how many staffers she has? She's got all these deputy mayors, they're probably making 200 grand. Every single city council person has top staffers that are also making 150 to 200 grand. There are so many high level members of city government that aren't directly responsible for anything that are getting paid a ridiculous amount of money, including in places like San Diego.
And this past weekend, LA Mayor Karen Bass announced she will take a pay cut and hold off unscheduled raises for her staff. NBC 7 Investigates reporter Alexis Rivas asked San Diego's mayor and city council members if they're considering foregoing their raises in July.
It's going to look real bad when they close beach bathrooms, but the members of the San Diego City Council are getting a raise.
This summer.
Also, based on what? You know, I think one of the most common sense mayors in the whole state is Matt Mahon of San Jose, and San Jose has plenty of problems, but he has proposed an idea where city staffers, city council people, if they're going to get raises, it's got to be based on merit and it's got to be based on outcomes. Because all of these people are already making way above the median income.
This summer, San Diego's city attorney, mayor, and city council members are all set to cash in on a scheduled pay raise. It'll mark the sixth one in five years.
Wait, what? The city council in San Diego and the mayor of San Diego have gotten a raise every year for the past five years?
It'll mark the sixth one in five years.
Six raises in five years? Nice work if you can get it.
And it doesn't appear there's anything they can do to stop it, even if they wanted to.
Okay, this is really interesting. Doesn't this kind of remind you of that scandal with the city of Bell oh, so many years ago, where Robert Rizzo, the city manager, was making $800,000 a year? And the members of the Bell City Council, which again was a very, very, very small city with a part-time city council, kept voting themselves pay raises, and in order to pay for it, they kept towing the vehicles of all the illegal aliens that lived in the city of Bell.
The world of politics.
Retiree Mike Kavanaugh has called San Diego home for 22 years.
It is just a wonderful lifestyle.
A lifestyle that's getting harder to afford.
San Diego is one of the most beautiful parts of the entire state, but it is getting more expensive than even some of the nicer parts of Los Angeles or Orange County. It's very desirable real estate.
So he pays attention.
Oh, wow.
To things like San Diego's $258 million budget crisis.
But of course, the budget shortfalls are a little different than just, oh, things are getting expensive. A lot of the budget shortfalls have to do with the fact that a lot of local cities and counties got these huge bailouts during COVID for way more than they needed. Because yeah, there was going to be some operating shortfalls with everything being locked down and revenues were going to go way down. But the American Rescue Plan, the first thing that Biden did when he got into office, gave so much money to these cities and these counties and school districts and state budgets that a lot of cities and counties started blowing up their budgets. Even though this was one-time money and temporary money, they decided to start expanding and making their budgets even bigger and bigger and bigger because, you know, when we run out of money, we'll just get more of it. Well, that didn't happen, now, did it? The money has run out and now it's time for make cuts, but apparently, the San Diego City Council cannot cut their own pay? You got to explain this one to me.
Million dollar budget crisis.
Eventually, the quality of life that we have is just not going to be there. And, you know, I just like San Diego too much to see it go down.
He would like the beach bathrooms to stay put, and maybe we find other places to trim it.
Part of the city's solution are budget cuts and asking San Diegans to pay more. More for things like public parking.
And parking is already a nightmare in San Diego.
More for things.
Not just for public parking, but also for private parking and any parking that happens to be in a residential neighborhood because the city of San Diego authorized all of those ADU hotels and ADU apartment buildings where you have a single family home and you can build as much as you want behind it, including a tower, as long as some of it's for affordable housing, and you don't even have to build parking.
More for things like public parking. So he reached out to NBC 7 Investigates, and he wasn't alone. Our team got emails from folks asking us to dig deeper into how the city spends our tax dollars in the first place.
I mean, it is frustrating because we see these local elected officials in a place like Los Angeles every day. They're not the smartest people. They're not the most honest people, as evidenced by how many of them have gone to federal prison lately. Yet they make way more money than someone of that level of intelligence should be entitled to. There, I said it.
That's why I reached out to you, and I was very surprised when I received the email back.
Some asked us how much city officials get paid. We thought that was a good question, so we asked the city for payroll records. San Diego's mayor makes $244,727 a year.
It's pretty high, but not as high as Karen Bass.
That means Mayor Todd Gloria makes more than the governor of California.
Oh, yeah. Gavin's salary is only 200. It's so bizarre.
And San Diego's nine council members take home $183,545 a year.
It's a lot of money, still not as much as LA City Council's 220K, but that is a lot for what some would consider the entry-level job into politics. Pretty much the first thing you run for is something like an LA City Council or a school board. They don't even want to tell us how much those people are making.
More than members of Congress.
Oh, yeah. If you work in Congress, I think your salary for a congressperson is 140, for the Senate, it's like 160 or 170. Local city council, one of nine, 180K.
They're all scheduled for another pay raise this summer, and just like the last five raises they've received since 2020, this year's pay bump will come without a public vote or public notice.
Okay, how did this happen? This is fascinating. How is it that the members of the city council in San Diego and the mayor have been scheduled to get raises every single year for the past five years, two in one year, and no one votes on it, no public decision is made on it? How exactly is this a thing? What is going on in San Diego? We're going to find out, and what you're going to find out is quite enlightening as to the nonsense that gets put into bills that you think are going to hold your government accountable. 800-222-5222 is the telephone number, 1-800-222-5222. Stick with us as we discover how it is that the city council and the mayor of San Diego, in a face of a $250 million budget shortfall, are about to get scheduled raises for the fifth year in a row. This is the News Blitz with Randy Wang on Talk Radio 790 KABC. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on Talk Radio 790 KABC. We're trying to figure out, in a $250 million budget shortfall, how it is that the San Diego City Council and the mayor are scheduled to get yet another pay raise this summer, just as they've had for the last five years in a row. How is this possible? And why do they say there's nothing they can even do about it if they wanted to? We'll find out, but first, let's go to Dale in Long Beach. Dale, hello.
Hello, Randy. You won't believe this. According to my computer, this was part of a series of five pay raises in three years, increasing their salary from $75,000 to $173,000. Last year alone, their pay jumped from $139,000 to $173,000.
You're totally right. And do you know how they got that ability? Do you know how they got all these scheduled raises? Through a voter ballot initiative that was supposed to make San Diego's government more ethical.
This is a common phrase.
I swear, we're going to get to the whole story. I'm so glad you did that investigating, but it's 100% true. San Diego city council people, five years ago, were making $70,000 a year, which is about the average salary for someone that lives down there, and now it's ballooned up to almost $200,000. And this was thanks to an initiative passed by the voters. Dale, thank you so much for the call. Appreciate it. Let's find out what happened here. This is wild.
The reason they can do that and the reason they make as much as they do today is because San Diego voters approved it overwhelmingly in a 2018 ballot measure.
These are the.
You got to read what's in ballot measures.
These are the only salaries in the city that have actually been voted on by the folks.
Bob Adely was the chief proponent and author of Measure L, the result of two decades of effort. Effort born out of frustration, says Adely, from watching what he says were costly and incompetent deals out of City Hall. Adely said many of the people serving on the council couldn't understand complicated city contracts.
And I sat down and I said, how do we fix that?
At the time, the city of San Diego.
Wait, you fixed that by paying these incompetent people more money? I don't see how that works.
At the time, the city of San Diego paid council members less than $70,000 a year. In theory, council members.
By the way, that's what it should be. I long have advocated for something called the people's salary. Because if you're representing a area, you are a mayor, you're a member of a city council, you should be held to the same standard that you put your constituents through. So if the average salary in the place you represent is 70,000, well, that should be your salary. And if you want to get a raise, well, then you have to improve the living conditions of your area, of your district. That's my idea, but I'm not married to it. Go run with it. Go put that on a ballot measure. You know what? That's actually not a bad idea.
In theory, council members could have voted to raise their salaries, but in practice, the move was unpopular.
But it was a mess, and it had to be fixed.
So Adely looked at how elected officials in Las Vegas successfully raised their position salaries.
I realized that they made it more attractive to voters by eliminating all those perks that nobody knew about.
Perks like car allowances and.
Wait a second, we have those perks in LA City and they make 220 grand a year. No wonder we're broke.
Perks like car allowances and hundreds of thousands of dollars in premium event tickets.
So how do you sell that?
Well, we had that and more in LA. Heck, the old mayor of Los Angeles, Antonia Viragosa, had a printer in his limo and he would print official certificates every single time he was going to a Laker game so he could go there on business.
So how do you sell that to the voters? And ultimately, we sold it to the voters as an ethics package.
So in addition to raising San Diego.
I like how this guy is like touting this as what a great thing that I did for the city. So people were told in 2018, in the city of San Diego, that Measure L was an ethics package to make your city council more ethical. And while it took away their free cars and they weren't able to go to Padres games for free anymore, think at this point, the Chargers had already left, well, they were going to go from $70,000 a year, bump, 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 over the next five years, up to $170,000 a year. Wow, wow, wow. The idea of this is, well, if we pay them higher salaries, we will attract better people for these jobs. I would argue, in a system where you don't apply for a job as much as you are elected to a job, you're not going to necessarily get the quality candidate you think you're getting when you offer for a big salary for a job in the private sector. We'll continue with this, and I'd love to take your phone calls, 800-222-5222, 1-800-222-5222. Mickey, stay on hold. We're going to come to you when we come back as we figure out why it is the voters in San Diego approved pay raises for five years in a row for the San Diego City Council, which now they say is the reason they cannot take a pay cut even if they wanted, while the city is facing a $250 million budget shortfall. This is even worse in Los Angeles, but I don't think we have this same measure. 800-222-5222, 1-800-222-5222. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on Talk Radio 790 KABC. It is the News Blitz with Randy Wang on Talk Radio 790 KABC. We're here every single day from five to six talking about the local issues that matter to you most and taking your phone calls at 800-222-5222, 1-800-222-5222, your emails as well at randykabc@gmail.com and search for the KABC News Blitz wherever you get your podcasts. The city of San Diego is facing a $250 million budget shortfall, but despite that, the members of the nine-seat city council and the mayor are about to get their sixth raise in the last five years. And apparently, this was because the voters approved an ethics measure on the ballot in 2018 that raised the salaries of San Diego city council people from 70,000 to now over 170,000. Wowee. We'll get back to this story, but I'd love to hear your reaction to this nonsense. Let's go to Mickey, listening in Tarzana. Mickey, hello.
Yeah, how you doing, Randy?
Doing great.
Oh, good. Yeah, I'm not actually calling in about the San Diego thing, but in general, I know you've been talking about the council offices. I think I told you before and just suggested, long story short, yes, you're correct. I think you're aware, your typical or average council office is a total waste of time. I mean, they just stink. They can't get things done. The office that I worked in, nothing to do with myself per se, but the office that I worked in, it was just an embarrassment. Couldn't get anything done, extremely dysfunctional, a lot of imbeciles in higher positions that should never have been allowed to be there, overpaid, ignorant as it could be. Yeah, I'm not sure, again, what they need is a czar, a council office czar that would just oversee the whole thing and actually examine, you know, the inner workings of the office, not just like leave it alone to function as they do. I mean, to really crawl up there, you know what, with a microscope and just see, you know, how you guys functioning or not functioning? Did you get anything done? Do you have idiots at the helm? You know, the likes, you know, and I still have never seen anything like that. I don't know why it isn't there. What do you think?
Well, I think that this is a place where elected officials get to give some nice big fat salaries to the people that helped them get there, whether it's friends of donors or people that worked on their campaign, and they're not going to want to get rid of that system anytime soon. They like the fact that they have a bunch of staffers with very well-paid salaries. Every city council office has two or three people that are making almost exactly as much as they are. Who knows how many people are making under Karen Bass, you know, 100 to 200,000 a year? And none of these people are accountable for anything, they're just advising the office. And it is a colossal waste of money. Yeah, it's a penny. It's a drop in the bucket compared to the $12 billion budget, but if they're not worried about what it looks like for their top staffers to be making such a ridiculous amount of money, these are not people that can be trusted to oversee a budget. And that's why we've seen these massive budget shortfalls in every major city in the state of California.
If I may say, exactly, these people are kind of like Sylvester, you know, guarding Tweety Bird. So, yeah, I get what you're saying, they're not going to like it, but my whole point is, I don't really care if they don't like it. What I want is someone in there who's a czar, you know? I know they're not going to want to give up their little nest egg, but that's what I want is a czar, you know, who's going to, you know, tear up, you know, these offices, look at them, examine them, and just say, all right, you know what? You guys stink, you can't get anything done, you've got bird brains at the helm, you have no accountability for all this money that's coming, you guys are totally overpaid and useless. So therefore, you know, you have to either be dismantled, which is the best, or at the very least dismantle them, you know, fix the problems, and then perhaps, you know, bring them back. But they just can't or should not be allowed to just function with no oversight, which is what's going on. It's just, I could hardly talk about it without, it's just so aggravating because I lived it, I watched it, it was horrible.
Well, and this is also one of the effects that we have of, you know, having a supermajority on that council, having everyone be with the same ideology for the most part. Yes, there's some more extreme members and some more conservative members, but for the most part, it's 14 to one there, and there is no oversight when you have that. We see it in Sacramento, and we definitely see it in Los Angeles. Mickey, thank you so much for the call, buddy. Appreciate it. 800-222-5222 is the telephone number. Let's go to John in Sherman Oaks. John, hello.
Okay, thank you for taking my call. Uh, yes, I know that you were mainly talking about San Diego, but, but yeah, here in LA, I, I mean, aren't these like city council people having to have like, at least like a college education or, I mean, they're sort of like our lawmakers, like they would be in Sacramento or, or in Washington, don't they have to have like, like a law degree? And, you know, yeah, they, they make so much money, and I mean, you have people that get like shot at, you know, like, uh, California highway patrolmen, I mean, they only start out at, start out at like $110,000 a year, but these people are like sitting on these cush jobs, making you said like 200,000? And they, you know, they're basically just running for office and maybe not even having to have a, a college degree or even a law degree at that? I mean, what gives?
It's one of the most fascinating things about local politics. You know, a lot of cities in a lot of states throughout the country, they have part-time legislatures, part-time city counselors, so it's just something you do if you want to get back to your community, maybe you get a little stipend, but when you make it a full-time job, you are now giving these exorbitant salaries to elected positions, which means there are no qualifications. The only qualification is to get enough votes, and when you have low voter participation, you look at Unicef Hernandez, she got 19,000 votes to give her a $220,000 a year salary for the next four years, and she got to appoint a dozen people under her that make six figures or more, let alone all the money that she gets to steer towards whatever nonprofits helped her get elected as well. It's a grift.
Well, you're, you're seconding my first notion of, yeah, I mean, there you go. They're, you know, they, they're in, they're in this position where they can give themselves raises in the middle of the night during the holiday season while no one is watching, and, you know, this is just what happens, and, you know, nobody's paying attention.
It's one of the things we're trying to fight every day on here. If we all paid a little more attention to what's going on locally, maybe we could start correcting some of this, but it all starts with us because ultimately, it's the people in Highland Park that put Unicef in office, it's the people in Hollywood that put Hugo in office. Even the people that didn't vote, they put Hugo in office by not voting.
Yes. I have one last beef. I have lived in Sherman Oaks in my house for about 35 years, and there's a crosswalk that, you know, my children used to take to their elementary. They went to Sherman Oaks Elementary, they cross on Green Leaf Street and Van Nuys Boulevard. They're 25 years old now, and the curb, like the handicap thing was like all like messed up to where like, you know, someone like in a wheelchair was going through it, they couldn't. And it was like that since 94, since we moved in, and it's never been repaired yet. I don't know how we can have the Olympics here with like a, a city like looking like that, so filthy, so unsafe, having to put like cops on the metro. It's just like a joke. Anyway, thank you very much for taking my call.
Thank you so much for calling in, John. Appreciate it, and you're totally right. I don't know how we're going to look in 2028, but I don't expect the city to be in a much better position than it is right now, and right now, it's a mess. When we come back, we're going to find out why it is the voters decided to give the city of San Diego's mayor and their city council massive raises over the last five years. How did they get roped into this? Because this was voted on by them. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on Talk Radio 790 KABC. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on KABC. We're taking your phone calls at 800-222-5222, 1-800-222-5222. City of San Diego facing a budget shortfall much like Los Angeles, although they only owe $250 million as opposed to a billion, but despite that, thanks to a voter initiative that was passed in 2018, all members of the city council and the mayor are scheduled to get a raise this summer while they're talking about closing public beaches, layoffs, and jacking up parking fees. Holy cow. Let's go to Ray in Redondo Beach. Ray, hello.
Hi, I've been to multiple city council meetings, and it blows me away to watch these people vote on stuff. They have. They have no clue what they're voting about. They will.
Oh.
New mandates into place and have no clue the impact or the effect. They've done zero research. I've seen them put in, you know, like, oh, you have to use the low-flow toilets. They didn't even know there are dual flush toilets. They didn't even know that the impact that does to your plumbing and how your drains don't work very good anymore. All these kinds of things they vote on and they do not have any expertise in these areas whatsoever.
Well, and in the love of no transparency, when they're voting on these things at city council, they don't even tell you what they're voting on. They just call them an item. They will not say out loud on television all the nonsense that they're voting on because like you said, they haven't read it and they don't want to be held responsible for it.
Exactly. They don't care. They just, and then there's a group called Southern California Association of Governments and they're trying to lead them down the path of what to do. And it's absolutely disgusting. They're, they're pushing their agendas for, you know, the 15-minute city and all these little things they want to do and all the liberal programs. And they're pushing it all onto these city councils and leading them down the path to, to go do all this stuff. And it's disgusting.
You're totally right, buddy. Thanks so much for the call. Appreciate it. And if they're not even paying attention to the things they vote on, do they really need $200,000 salaries? We'll go back to this incredible piece by NBC seven in San Diego. Next, it's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on KABC. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on KABC. If you'd like to email us, you could do so at randykabc@gmail.com. Bev from San Diego writes in, hey, Randy, Todd Gloria and each of the city council members could cash their checks, turn around and write a check for the percentage of the raise they're getting and give it back to San Diego. They can give that percentage of that raise every month. That's a great idea and we should hold them to that because they care, right? The only reason they're accepting these raises is they have to, right? Let's go back to this incredible piece from NBC seven detailing the scheduled raises for the mayor of San Diego and the city council.
So in addition to raising San Diego elected officials' salaries to automatically align with San Diego Superior Court judges, Measure L also eliminated those car and sports ticket perks and barred city officials from taking lobbying jobs after leaving office.
Oh, so ethical. I'm sure there are plenty of loopholes around all of that.
Oddly's plan worked. Measure L passed overwhelmingly, 78% voted yes.
So I would imagine, and I have to look at how the campaign was run, but you decide you're going to vote yes on Measure L in San Diego because yeah, you don't want elected officials going free to sports games. You don't want them becoming lobbyists. You want them getting free cars and all these other perks. Were they aware that they were also voting to more than double their salary?
The result in his mind has been a wild success with more qualified officials at the helm.
Uh, where's the proof of that? LA City Council pays $220,000 a year and I'll tell you, we are not sending our best.
Now that his measure has more than doubled the salaries of elected officials in less than five years, we asked him whether he still supports it.
I mean, it's the least we can do. Quite frankly.
Oh, oh, did we just get one?
I mean, it's the least we can do. Quite frankly, I think the number ought to go up.
Okay, this guy is such a huge hack. Who in California looks at their local government and says, these people need to get paid even more?
How many of the voters who voted in favor of this do you think really understood what it meant in terms of council salaries?
I don't know. I mean, that's a question. The answer to that question is the same to anything that goes on the ballot.
Which is people vote on things without knowing what they are. If you see a ballot measure, whether it's a local, a county, a state, you just have to follow this one simple rule. If you decide off the bat, you would vote no for it, you're done. You don't need to do any research. But if you're going to vote yes, no matter how basic you think the issue is, you need to do all the research you can do, not just on the information they give you. Look online, Ballotpedia is a great resource. Find out. Commit yourself to learning about everything because I guarantee you, 70% of San Diegans had no idea they were voting for these pay raises.
Do you think when most voters read that, they really understood how much money council members and the mayors would then start making and how those automatic raises would work?
No, no.
The guy who wrote the bill says, yes, I'm pretty sure voters had no idea that the pay raises were in there.
NBC seven investigates reached out to all nine city council members and Mayor Todd Gloria. We didn't ask them about a pay cut, just whether they would consider not taking their next scheduled raise. The short answer was no.
Of course.
A couple of city council member offices questioned whether they could legally forego a scheduled pay raise. So we asked the city attorney's office and they got back to us. They said because Measure L made elected official salaries part of the city charter, it would require a voter-approved amendment to that charter.
This seems as corrupt as you can get, but it's the best kind of corruption because of the worst corruption in the state of California is the stuff that's perfectly legal. It's written into the city charter that members of the city council get these raises no matter what, no matter how broke the city is? That didn't make a whole lot of sense.
For any city council member or the mayor to forego a pay raise or give back a portion of their salary.
Mayor Todd Gloria's communications director sent us this statement, quote, "The mayor's salary will remain consistent with the voter-approved salary setting formula."
Now, here's the thing. The guy who wrote this says, well, we're going to get better people. I don't think that's true. I think in fact, we're inviting worse people because now you have a way for the incredibly incompetent to get very high salaries and it's through politics. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on KABC.